All right, let's get started. Let's have a time of prayer and a pledge of allegiance if you'll stand. Dear Lord, we are thankful for the end of another election cycle. We're thankful that you got our county through that and our nation through that. We look forward to having a rest from that. But now, we want to take care of some final business here and canvass this vote. We ask your blessing upon this meeting in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, Commissioner. All right, welcome, everyone. It is 9:00. Today is the 17th of November, and we're here today to canvass the vote from our general election back last week on November 8th. At this time, I will ask if there's any public comment. I don't have anybody that's filled out a form, so I'm going to assume no, and I'm going to move on to item number two, which is to hear from our elections administrator regarding the vote counts here in our county. Chrissy, welcome. Kitra, welcome.
Okay, I will see. I do have my hands. Okay, this is my first canvas, so I'm not really sure what I'm supposed to do. You know, we, during early voting in Election Day, we use the M-100s. They put the ballots in and they count the ballots, and you have some sheets in here that reflect that. Those are our receipts, call them on the sheet paper. These are the totals that come out with the machine, and the card is what we put in on Election Night into the ERM that tallies those. And then, we have return sheets that come from Election Day. These come from the polling places. They put how many voters they had on here. We go and check it with these, make sure the numbers match together. And then, I've included a few reports that come off the ERM once we're finished. This is just a block style canvassing report that we included in that. And this is the same thing, it's just in a different format.
Do you have any reason to think that the results here in Titus County were anything less than a perfect representation of everyone that voted?
No, I think it turned out perfect. I think it was great.
There was nothing that was even a close call anywhere, I don't think?
No, there was nothing. It was all ten hundreds of numbers of each other.
Where can I see the number that shows the breakdown of early vote versus November 8th vote?
You look on these, right here.
Okay, the ones that are typed and printed out. All right, there it is. So, total votes cast was 13,000?
No, that's including, that's including the city ballots, the number.
Okay, so that might be double counted?
Yes.
Okay. What would be a good representation of the number of people that actually placed their vote early versus on Election Day?
For just the county?
Yes, ma'am.
I may have to run a different report for that, if I can. On this, on this one right here, it's really...
Well, if I take that 13,000, and can you tell me how many city votes were cast? Thirty-eight oh three?
Mm-hmm.
So, if I take that from 13,309, that puts me at about 9,500. Does that sound about right?
Mm-hmm.
How does that compare to the biggest vote we've had in prior years?
I've never worked one that's had, we've been close, but it would have been four years ago, the last...
Well, how close? I'm just curious how big this was over that even. So, I think that would have been...
It may have been 8,500 votes, the last time.
Do you have a breakdown on the number of votes cast during early vote at our two locations, just to help us determine, was the secondary location for early vote a good thing?
I don't have that breakdown, but I really think it was worth it. We had, they ended up having 900 ballots cast, and about 300 of those were city. So, about 500 or 600 is how many voters they had come through.
Total during the early vote?
At Trinity, only at Trinity.
Say it again, 500?
They had about 500 or 600 voters come through, just Trinity by itself.
Well, I would say that that's probably 10% of the early vote occurred at the second location. That seems kind of light to me.
Well, I mean, I don't know. Just, I'm just thinking about those extra 600 people coming through our office, I think it went tremendously. And being the first time that we did it, I think, I mean, I just, I think it was, I think it was a good deal. And I think if we decided to do it again in the future, more people are going to know about it ahead of time, and I think it's going to work even better.
Would you, you know, they were pretty far apart. Would you, and we, first, we thought that was a positive thing. Would you consider a different location the next time?
Um, I think we need to look at Trinity again, but a different location would not be out of the question. But I also think having distance between them helps, because if, you know, the people that live on that end of town, or go to church on that end of town, or, you know, just travel that end of town, they're going to be there, and they may not want to come all the way into town to vote. So, I mean, I'm not necessarily saying that we would have to use Trinity again, but...
But you'd be in favor of all the manpower that we spent to have a secondary location? Okay. All right. How was the load on your building this time during early vote?
It was packed. I mean, we have quite a bit of voters coming in, plus we've got our stuff that we have to put together, but we made it work.
Well, I'll come back to some of those details in a minute. I would like to have another follow-up meeting like we had several months ago to discuss the strengths and weaknesses of this past election, so that we can do everything we can do to improve. And I'll get with you on that, and I'll email you about that, but I'd like to invite, you know, a good number of people, especially our party chairs and their workers, and let's, you know, share constructive criticism amongst one another and find ways to make this better. And make notes now, so that we can remember all this stuff later. You want to go over these votes with us, just as a formality, maybe those first few pages?
No. I'm a new speaker.
Ma'am?
I have time to turn something off that's in the middle page.
Okay, can we do that at the end? Because I don't really have you, I didn't have you as additional speaker, but I'll certainly let you do that. So, just hold that thought for a second.
Sure. These sheets right here?
Yeah.
Okay. Just kind of tell you what the vote total was?
Yeah.
Okay. So, the first thing that's on ballot is your straight party. You can vote a straight party ticket and not have to do anything else on the ballot. The Republican Party had 3,170 votes. The Democrat had 1,748. Libertarian had 67, and the Green Party had 24. President, Vice President, Donald Trump had 6,511. Hillary Clinton had 2,597. Gary Johnson had 191. Jill Stein had 44, and the write-in had 76. The U.S. Representative District Four, John Ratcliffe had 6,994, and Cody Walnack had 1,117.
Let me ask you something. How do you register a write-in vote? Does somebody have to bring that to your attention?
On a federal case, they do it all in the state. And then, the state contacts us and says, hey, you have a write-in. These are the official names of the write-ins, and they have to put, they can put whoever they want to on that line, but in order for it to count towards that write-in, it has to be that official name on that line. Railroad Commissioner, Commissioner Wayne Christian had 5,949. Gray D'Arboro had 2,465. Mark Miller, 436. And Martina Salinas, 216. Justice Supreme Court, Place Three, Deborah Lerman had 6,076. Mike Westergren had 2,440. Capelas, 305. And Renaldo Rivera Munoz had 252. Justice Supreme Court, Place Five, Paul Green, 6,205. Dory Contreras Garza, 2,530. Tom Oxford, 268. And Charles Waterbury, 66. Justice Supreme Court, Place Nine, Ava Houston, 6,251. Savannah Robinson, 2,475. Don Bolton, 287. And Jim Chisholm, 129. Judge Court of Criminal Appeals, Place Two, Mary Lou Keel, 5,990. Lawrence Larry Myers, 2,614. Mark Ash, 336. And Adam King Blackwell Repulsa, 70. The Judge Court of Criminal Appeals, Place Five, Scott Walker, 6,153. Betty Johnson, 2,495. William Ryan Strang III, 191. And Judith Sanders Castro, 178. Judge Court of Criminal Appeals, Place Six, Michael Kessler, 6,110. Robert Burns, 2,579. And Mark Bennett, 335. Member State Department of Education District Nine, Adam Ellis, 6,064. Amanda Wilford off, 2,655. Anastasia Wilford, 272. State Senator District One, Ryan Hughes, 7,178. State Representative District Five, Cole Heffner, 7,189. Chief Justice Sixth Court of Appeals, Josh Morris, 7,034. District Judge Seventy-Six, Judicial District, Danny Woodson, 7,196. District Attorney Seventy-Six, Judicial District, Charles Craig Bailey, 7,073. County Attorney, John Mark Coburn, 7,220. Sheriff, Tim Ingram, 7,342. Tax Assistant for Lakers, Judy Cook, 7,387. County Commissioner, Precinct One, Al Riddle, 1,836. County Commissioner, Precinct Three, Dana Atwood, 1,594. Constable Precinct One, Chris Grant, 5,810. Constable Precinct Two, Ray Barrett, 1,237. And Barbara Jo Spearman, at 828. And the Row Proposition Four was 4,321, and against was 3,826.
All right, well, just on voting stats, what else do you need to formally present to us before we talk about general election comments? Anything else?
I don't think so.
What are going to be your objectives here over the next few weeks? Is there anything, after all that turmoil, that you're going to be working on? Because we need to talk about voting equipment here.
Yes. Like to be, that to be one of the things that we do. But right now, we're working on, we have to get everything packed up for the election. It has to go in boxes, and we have to store it for 22 months. The ballots have to be stored in locked boxes, which we already have all that done. Once we finish with that, I have to go and report to the Secretary of State, and after the canvass is done, the final numbers, that's, that doesn't take very long. Pretty much just getting everything cleaned up and sending people lists, their requests, is pretty much where we're at. So...
Look, I can ask you this. I know we had some problems at Blodgett with the, was it the laptop or something that you, they had to do paper instead of...
Yes, her computer. We kept her computer because we couldn't get it updated right, so we kept it at the office, and she did have paper.
Okay. Judge, if we look into the future, and I know we're looking at buying the voting machines, I would like some way to keep a paper trail on everything.
Well, in the voting machines, we're looking at, we're looking at keeping the paper ballots. We're not looking at...
Yes, I don't even try to go to computers. I just...
And that computer that they use, all it is is a poll list. It's just a list of the people that are registered in Titus County.
And I understand that, but I still want to keep the paper trail.
Right. And Titus County, that's the way most people in Titus County feel.
And that's what we did, what, 10, 12 years ago when we bought these machines. I like to keep the trail.
Right.
If anything ever happens, you've got to, you've got to have the paper trail.
What was the computer that went down at Blodgett? What computer are you talking about?
Their poll list. They, you know, the money you just spent to get them all to speak to each other?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that a laptop?
It's a laptop. It's not a full-size laptop, it's a little bit, it's what we call it, the A-cir, A-cir, it's a E-B poll, or laptops, what it is, yeah. Netbook. And we were having some problems with it, it wasn't, because they're all getting, they're all getting pretty old, too. So, we couldn't get the program to come up the way it's supposed to. And so, we had called Seth, but of course, it's such a short notice, you know, he's got stuff, he's got to give it to. So, we couldn't, he never came over, and so, we just had to keep that one in the office and not use it. And so, she just turned lists, instead of being on the computer, it was going to paper.
That's, David, that wasn't that big of a problem, but it still, it takes time to look at it.
Yes. It's a lot, it does take a little bit more time to look them up through that piece of paper than it does to look them up on that computer.
Okay.
But, what I call a major thing, but...
Just on that Tuesday, and the total vote count out there, it was what? Do you have any idea?
Quite big, no. Had a good turnout.
I'm not sure, but four usually has a pretty good turnout. It's not one of the bigger boxes.
Couple of hundred?
Couple of hundred, yeah.
Okay.
Chrissy, could you explain to me what the over and under vote is?
An over vote is going to be when they voted for too many candidates, and it didn't count. They just marked that as an over vote, and it didn't go towards any other candidate. An under vote is when they didn't vote at all. If they, we have people that get a blank ballot and put it in the machine, blank. They don't want to vote anything, they just want to know that their name is out there, that they did put that ballot in there.
I thought it was, might have been where they might have not voted all the way through the ballot, you know, just picked one or two here or there.
And that's, I mean, and then the races where they didn't vote would have an under vote, because they didn't vote there.
All right. Each office that did not get a vote is counted as an under vote? So, if they went in there and just circled the presidential only and left all the others, they might have...
All of those others would have an under vote.
If you just selected straight party, that...
Then it would pick. If you just selected straight party, it would pick everybody through that ballot that was for that party. And even straight party, you would have to still go to the back of the ballot and vote on the row system, because it would not have, you know, it wouldn't have included your party.
Oh, right, okay. So, that would, that could be an under vote?
Exactly.
If they just voted straight party and didn't turn it over?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Do we need to replace all these laptops when we get voting equipment?
Seth told me the last election back in, well, during the primaries in March, that it was time. It was time that we needed to just get rid of it and start over.
Do you have any idea what that cost?
I don't, because there's so many vendors out there that have them. So, I haven't been checking in to see which one would be the best one, but I can't do that.
It's not a specialty computer, just a standard, basic laptop?
And that's what Seth said, too. He said, you can just use a, go to Staples and buy a laptop, because you don't have to have something special. It could be just a regular computer. But they, and then we just have to put that specific file on it to get the correct information on that.
I would imagine we could buy a bulk, and get them for $300 apiece through Seth, would be my guess. And then, you have, they'll install the, who installs the software on each of those?
They send it to us in an email, and we put it on a drive, and we do it ourselves.
Okay. All right. Anything else before we get into a general discussion?
As far as the canvass goes?
Yeah, okay. All right. Guys, you got it all there before you? If you have questions about any of this vote, ask. Otherwise, our motion is to canvass the vote. Canvas the returns from the November 8th general election and certify the results of the election.
Hold on. I've looked at this in advance. I just went down to it, everything, everything. I don't have a problem with it.
Motion. Motion is made by Commissioner Fields to canvass the return from the November 8th, 2016, general election and certify the results of this election.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Baxter, if you would, if you'll come up to the podium, or we'll hand you a mic. I'd just like to get any comments where anybody could hear them that chose to listen. And you were going to bring up something about our early vote, and you were an early promoter of that secondary early vote location.
Yes, I was indeed. The only thing is, the location I was not really happy with, because since being here in Titus County, I had been informed that that area there was where the rich people live, and either used the work well to do. So, how many people actually in that area in comparison to some of the other areas like South Jefferson, or other, would have pulled more voters into that polling place had it been set in a different place? Because we refer upon the election office, as she mentioned, was still great. I feel like that when you look at that in comparison to the fact that there was some voting equipment bought in, when the judges were returning their packages of supplies and what have you, there were lots, lots broken on them. Actually, they couldn't even lock their bags up, and a lot of other things in addition to having the computer malfunction. When you look at the expense that you're going to pay for that, would it be worth it to move it to an area where you're only going to get 500 people actually coming in, when you have 2,000 and et cetera coming into the main polling place? I call it the main polling place, but while I understand that's been the polling place for many years here. But I'm looking at the fact that if you compared that with the equipment and the judges having to deal with the fact that they have broken equipment and what have you, wouldn't that money have been better spent getting that corrected rather than a second voting place where you're only going to have 500 some people coming there to vote? I was concerned about that, because I felt like it would have been better had it been in a different location. Not that it was not necessary to have a second place, but it would have been better in a second location, because I'm just looking at the dynamics of comparison of how many people in that particular vicinity were actually coming there to vote. See, I'm not saying that I know all of that, but I'm just taking in what I've heard about the area and proximity to some of the other areas that it could have been placed. I would like to know, what is the total number of registered voters here in Titus County? When you look at that and how many did turn out, I don't really know how many, but I would like to know that.
There's over 16,000.
Okay, and how many of that 16,000 did show up?
I have the calculator figured out.
About 9,500.
Okay.
We've established that. Well, the fact that we had the largest turnout that we've ever had, I think, is a good indication that, you know, we had a pretty good turnout. Now, could we do something better? Well, that's what we're going to, that's what we want to discuss in the weeks ahead. And will moving it to a different location help? It could. I'm not sure that I necessarily agree with your line of thinking, that that's where the rich folks live, and that implies the rich folks don't get out and vote. But I think what we can, I think what we can do is have a better PR campaign well in advance of the next election and let people know, because that was a relatively short-term decision that we made to have that secondary location. I think once people get used to that and know that there's going to be a secondary vote location, far as I'm concerned, I honestly do not care where it is. I really don't care. That happened to be, I thought, a well-chosen location for multiple reasons. It was on the northern half of the community. It had plenty of parking. It was one level. There was plenty of room. They had restrooms, coffee, I mean, there was a lot of reasons why that was a good location. Now, looking back, it's always easy to say, well, why, we should have gone somewhere else. And I'm certainly open, and I imagine anybody else is open, to considering another location. We just need to promote it well in advance and get that word out there, because I know people would rather vote in a place where they don't have to wait in line, and had they known, well, maybe they would have voted somewhere else.
Absolutely, but actually, I'm not saying that rich people don't vote, and there's nothing wrong with rich people. I'm just saying that in comparison to some of the areas, how many people would you have gotten to come to a closer place within their particular location rather than in that location because of the number of people that would be, would fit into that category, I would think.
I would say that, I would say we're only speculating on the answer to that question. I don't know. I don't know.
Absolutely.
But I think, I think that education would have been far more important than location, because there's plenty of people that could have just as easily gone out there, but they choose to come to the place that they know best, and if they don't know, they don't know.
Absolutely.
But do you feel like, still feel like a second early vote location is a good thing?
I do.
Okay.
I do, because I think it would alleviate some of the pressure that would be on the voting place here on Madison, having a second location. I'm just really concerned about where that location is for the benefit of the voters. That's, that's just exactly what I'm saying, that.
Okay. Anything else?
I believe that's it. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your comments, and I hope that you'll be there with us when we have this follow-up meeting to kind of go over suggestions. I know you have several suggestions, but all in all, Chrissy and Kitra, I want to thank you for maintaining the peace during this vote and coming up with a vote that I don't think anybody's even mentioned the word voter fraud or impropriety. I thought it went, all things considered, we're still in a relatively new location. We had a secondary vote availability for the early vote. We've got just a lot of things that are different than they have been for many years. And to have this kind of a turnout, I think all went very well. But we want to continue to find ways to improve the process, find ways to improve the utilization of that building. Gosh, there are just so many simple things that I think of. If we'd have had Judy Cook's vestibule open that night, it might have been good. And that's originally, originally, the way that building was designed was to have both of those waiting areas in auto-registration and tax collection to be open for some overflow room, and we didn't get full utilization out of that. So, just little things like that, and having signage, and having maybe some, something in the paper and on the radio to let people know about early vote. So, just little things like that and having signage and having, uh, maybe some, uh, something in the paper and on the radio to let people know about early vote. What would you say was the average wait during the worst part of early voting? Any idea?
Fifteen, twenty minutes.
That's the worst that it got? Fifteen minutes?
Yes. Yes. And Mount Pleasant, that's that. And Dallas, that's wonderful. I mean, if you...
I agree. It's all relative. You know, people wait hours in other locations. And here, we want, want to walk in and never stop. We just want to check the box and keep on moving. Well, I think that's, I think that's really good. Um, but you're right, yeah, folks, folks have, folks expect a lot quicker. As far as using the two, uh, northern, I mean, the east and west entrances of that building and not having access to that old door, did that seem to go okay?
Yes, that, that worked out pretty good. Um, we had some, some customers across the hall because it is their tax season, and they did have a lot of traffic too, because at one point in time, we had voters running down the hallway. But, yes, it was congestion in the hallway, but it was a lot better in the rooms, in our, in our rooms, in our office. So, I think if we can just handle the congestion for those two weeks, I think it worked out perfect.
Okay. Will you plan a meeting within the next 30 days and identify the people that you would like to come to that meeting where we can brainstorm again and, and make notes as to how we can improve? And also, in the, within the next couple of months, I haven't been over there in that storage room in a long time, but it's, it's about time to go through there and start throwing some stuff away.
And we've got, we've got, we've got everything gathered together that can be done.
Is it time to bring a dumpster to the side of that building?
Well, it can't just be dumped, it has to be burned.
Okay, that kind of stuff. I was thinking about old office supplies and stuff.
Well, and there's some of those too, but as far as the stuff that has to be...
Is it time to bring the, the shredder?
A few minutes, I'll work on that. The only thing is, we was going to do the shredder last time, but we have so much stuff, there's no way we could have gotten it all to where it needed to go. Plus, we have to keep an eye on it until it's actually been shredded or signed off. We have to have somebody sign off saying that they took election supplies, and it would make me feel more comfortable if I could see it being done.
What being done?
The shredding or burning or, um...
If you hire a, well, I want to hear his comments about his burn pile, but talking about the professional shredder that we come to town, that we have come to town, why would just seeing them loaded up? I mean, that's their job, they're professionals.
But it's election stuff. I mean, I just, I don't think it would be a problem. I don't think that, you know, anybody's going to say anything, but if it did, it would come back on me.
What is the most sensitive data that possibly exists in the world of elections?
Uh, voter information, just which is public information.
What's vote, what voter information? There's no social security, there's no social security numbers, there's no names on the ballots.
Some of that stuff, there are social security numbers, and there are a lot of trouble with social numbers. Um, but just the ballots that have to be destroyed, I mean, we can't, those can't be run around town, the ballots, you know?
But really, what sensitive data is on there? There's no name, there's no, there's no voter names on there. I'm just saying relative to the other stuff that we bring the shredder up for, I mean, you've got felony information on, uh, you know, criminals, and you've got all kinds of stuff. I, I, I think you can rest assured if we bring a professional shredder in. I'm not sure I'd have a problem with you loading up the trailer and taking it to the burn pile, but that's not my decision. Well, will you let me know when you think it's time?
Yes.
And we'll, we'll bring that shredder up there, park him on the side of that building and load him up. We want to be a...
Either anytime, we're good. I mean, we're ready to go.
Literally, anytime.
Literally, anytime. This afternoon, I mean, we can do it anytime.
Is it, is it all in the storage building, or is some of it at your office?
No, it's all in the storage building, and it's, we've got it all stacked together right beside the door when we walk in, it's all ready to go.
Okay. Well, this would be a good time because they've, they've moved all those white poles that were there along the side of the building. He can pull right in, even get up on the curb and, and load it up. Well, I'm going to have Carolyn make an appointment with them then.
Okay.
And I'll have her clear the date with you first.
Okay.
Okay. Well, you were going to say something?
I'm going to say, well, as long as I can remember what I've always done in the fall, and I've got to get a burning permit because a lot of this stuff is coming out of bridges and stuff we call down there, dead trees and all this, but you have to get a permit to comply with FEMA. I've got two big piles, and I mean big piles. And what I normally do when I burn, I contact everybody, district clerk, anybody's got anything that needs to be destroyed. When we do it, we come up and get it in one of our dump trucks, and it's time, and we, I put two hands in the truck, we sign off, we sign, we pick that up. We get out there to the burn pile, we sign, they'll say, we, nobody's there alone with those ballots or anything else. We throw it in together, when it's burning, and it'll burn up. Uh, I guess it's something I've always done, because you never know, like county clerk's office or Judy's office or stuff. Those stuff do have social security numbers, it does have a lot of different things on there, so we just burn it. But shredding's fine with me too, that's just something I don't have to do.
Once we have, I, I like the idea of a shredder for the documents you're talking about. I think that's a professional way to do that. After you get rid of those, would it be worth having Commissioner Fields bring a dump trailer up there for miscellaneous stuff? Do you have non-sensitive trash, old equipment, broken chairs, et cetera? It seems like, I remember, there's a bunch of that kind of stuff that needs to go. Okay. Well, before the end of the month, we're going to have, I don't know about before the end of the month, within the next two, three weeks, we'll have a shredder up there. Let's get that done, and then we'll coordinate with Commissioner Fields to bring his dump trailer and a couple of guys to, to take everything out of there that's, that needs to be trashed.
Now, you've looked at our, our old, like, desks and stuff that's in there? You're, are you telling me that...
I'm telling you, I'll wait and make that decision. We'll go over that together. We're sure not going to throw out anything that has use somewhere, but some of that broken furniture, that's, there's no use of keeping that. And we got to eliminate some of the clutter in that room to fully utilize that and get you guys better organized and free up some storage space for who knows what else we might have. All right. Anything else today?
Did you want me to address anything that was said Monday, or do you want to save it for our future meeting?
Why don't you save it for our, for our meeting, and then you can come back, and I would like you to report to the Commissioners Court, "Hey, these are the subjects that we talked about. Here's what we're going to do about it going forward."
Okay.
Now, if there's anything you feel the need to, to tell us right now, go ahead.
Um, it's not going to change whether it's any hour later or...
Yeah, but, you know, the guys that are sitting up here, myself included, since we're not real plugged into that process, a lot of it may not be as meaningful as it would lead to...
Well, my main concern is I want Ms. Baxter to understand, you know, it's like...
She'll be in that meeting.
Yes, so that's, that's my main concern right there. I mean, and I don't think that y'all don't care, it's just that she's going to know more about what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
My main concern is the things that she addressed, I want to, you know, give her an explanation for that, or try to clear up any confusion as far as that goes. So, yes, we can, her and I can have a meeting, or we can save it for the next...
Is that okay with y'all?
This is probably stupid, but, uh, we're only, we're only four years, it's going to be four years before we have another election that big to talk about an alternate, alternate, uh, early voting or anything. I mean, that's, we, we won't have it the next three years, right?
That, that's true, but if we forget about some of these things, then we'll forget about them four years from now. And if we can, if we can address these concerns and change our procedures and have notes for her to refer to four years from now, let's do it while it's fresh on our mind. But yeah, I'm hoping that even in four years, maybe it won't be as, um, chaotic as this year was in the national election, but we don't know. That's what we thought four years ago, probably. Okay. Anybody else? All right.
Judge, I will let you know, I've got two big burning piles. I'm, uh, Larry McRae will give me a per, burning permit, because I have to have them, that's what FEMA requires. And I will check different elected officials when we go...
TCEQ really is who require, TCEQ really is who wants that information, I believe.
And I still, I've got to get a permit, Larry's the one that issued the permit.
Okay. When do you anticipate doing a burn?
Oh, in the next month.
Okay.
It's got, well, I'm saying, I'm anticipating...
If it don't rain, I'm not burning anything.
Yeah, let's get some rain first. Could you, are y'all here next week? If we got, if we got lucky and got the shredder here next week?
Yes.
Monday and Tuesday at Wednesday? Let's see what we can do there. They may not be available.
The other elected officials, because I know in the county clerk's office, I know Judy's office, and probably Deborah's office, there's some documents in there that's got all of this, got social security, it's got locked boxes.
Well, remember, we had the, we had the shredder here, what, a month ago? We had a big, a big shred, so I bet you they gotten rid of most of it. We will, we will let them know if there's anything that they've got last minute.
Bring it back.
Yeah.
Let's do it all at one time. And I, and I don't mind helping that way, or if we want to do the shredder, that's fine. That's not a problem. But we just do it certain times through the year, about twice a year is what I do.
All right. Thank you, everyone. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Uh, go ahead.
No. Well, then you go ahead.
Well, I don't want to dismiss. All I've done, given this, Ms. Carolyn, and this is a community Thanksgiving meal. Anybody that don't have a place to go, we're doing a Thanksgiving meal, turkey, ham, the whole works that the fellowship building next to the fire station, it's Thanksgiving